Next item is item five, business item roadway rehab change order number four. Scott, would you help us with that?
This came to us from the Kisther Campo, our consultant that's overseeing the road rehab project. This is a deduct for the various items. So it's a net deduct from the contract of $4,975.50 for those three items that are listed here.
Do we need to have any conversation about this? Is anything, anything that we?
I just have to say that in all the years that I've seen change orders, I have never seen one that was reducing the amount.
Well typically they come at the end of the project when you do all your pluses and minuses.
I was really impressed.
I was impressed. I will pass that on.
Will you make a motion to approve the change order?
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further conversation?
Yes, thank you. Scott, your numbers are wrong.
No, good.
My numbers are wrong and I beg your pardon.
We're $765 short. If you go to page eighty-three.
Did I transpose a number?
There's a transposition error. If you go to page eighty-three and look at the bottom right, you've got a figure of 308550. Are you looking at that number there?
Yes.
It should actually be 385050 if you look at page eighty-six. You've transposed, it's been transposed wrong.
One or the other is wrong.
No, page eighty-six is correct. It comes from PMI.
It's?
No, wait a minute. Page eighty-three is correct.
If you look at page, let's start with page eighty-six. That's the best, most logical way to do this.
Okay.
PMI given a figure of 3850.50 which I have, which we have to trust.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Good sense.
Then it's been transposed wrong on page eighty-three.
Thirty, thirty-eight fifty-fifty.
You've just got the figures the wrong way around.
Ah, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and that means that your total figure on page eighty-three should be 574050, which is 765 more deduction, which is even better, Margaret.
It is.
So then the page eighty-two needs to be revised also?
Correct.
So does this need to come back or can we revise it?
With the board's pleasure and direction, we'll be happy to revise it and then if I can process accordingly through the chairman who will address it in such a fashion.
It's fine with?
That's my motion.
That's what I thought.
Don't use my words, Scott.
Agree, you'll agree with that, ma'am?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Good catch, Rod.
Motion to carry five, you report. I do for sure.
I'm in business, that's what I do.
Okay, stormwater system cleaning and repair.
Okay, didn't mean to be long-winded here, but between Tetra Tech and ourselves, we've put this stormwater system cleaning and repair out to bid twice each time we receive one bid back. We have decided to modify and break up the scope of work and for whatever reason, stipulations in the specifications were more challenging to some of the contractors, the bonding requirements and things due to the size of the project. So after talking with them and those in the industry, we decided to break it out and break it down. Our immediate need is for cleaning the storm pipes within our roadways being Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive to accommodate the road rehab. And that's what I'm bringing forward here and requesting that we go forward and do it under a, well, let me back up. We need to reject the last bid on June third where we only got one bid. But to go forward and under a time of material not to exceed amount for the first nine items with sewer viewer and cleaning, and those are the smaller concrete pipes, it's just cleaning only, and these are in various locations under Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive. And then the second part would be to, with Extreme Golf Course Underwater Solutions, Inc., doing business as Extreme Divers, to have them clean the larger pipe that they do wet, if you will, and there's two repairs in those sections. We have modified the spec as I've written here to allow them to dispose of the material here on site and they will remove it at the end of the project if so desired. If not, we have some low areas we could fill in with good, clean fill. So we'll try to utilize that method. But I think there's a cost savings from when we originally bid it, so I don't know if Danny has anything to add to our, our thought process here? Any questions or?
The last sentence?
Yes.
My recommendation is to reject the bid, negotiate with Extreme Divers, Road Phase for cleaning repairs, yada, 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 for less than 129.7 plus $5,000, say 135. I think that's say 134.7. But did you mean to round up to 135?
I thought it was 126,000.
That's what I've got.
I have 126.
On page ninety?
That is on page eighty-nine.
Okay, I had written this over the several months. Back in June 24th on page eighty-nine was my first summary.
So that's old news.
Yes, and then if you follow to the next sheet on page ninety, under September 1, I rewrote from new information and that's where I came up with the 126,000 dollars.
Okay, so I was trying to build on the math, but okay.
No, I only have, I have only one question. How are you going to handle the maintenance of traffic?
I have estimated, and there's only three areas of maintenance of traffic that will be required, and is up in the, on the sheet ninety-two, there's three locations there along Griffin Drive. And so it'd be a time of material, cost plus, and I have put in money for that and to handle the MOT, maintenance of traffic in there. They will hire a contractor to do that while they're working.
Okay. So you're satisfied the whole thing is ready for us to go forward?
I am.
Scott, why have we got so few bidders for stuff like this?
Well, we could start at the beginning, which is a good place to start.
Okay.
In the beginning.
I'm ready for that.
There was, if you recall, three years ago or so, you started TVing these pipes with Morris Riley. And they did their TV and their cut sheets and their summaries and things to get our initial report. They did, at the end of the day, they did probably 90 percent of all of Gateway. And so by utilizing that information, then they came back and created, we put, Tetra Tech helped put together a spec using their information. Well, that information wasn't very user-friendly to the bidders. It was confusing, to say the least. And so the bidders, this is too much, this is too confusing, I'm not going to bid. Plus, originally, we looked at bidding not only the roadway sections, but we want to do Silver Lakes, Stony Brook, and then Gateway in general. And as I wrote in here, it was, you know, 1.5 million dollars or whatever it was. And then they'd have to bond it and everything else, so people, they just walked away and they wouldn't bid it. That was the initial bid. The second bid, we tried to break down a little bit further. We did have the requirements, if you recall, a few months ago where we said, well, we had to have general contractors bid it. And so that added another layer of interest in there to say. And after discussing with Tony and others, we said, well, you know, this is really just maintenance and repair and it's one sole source, one contractor. So under those guidelines, you know, we don't need a general contractor, we're doing maintenance work. So now we've broken it down to that level and it's taken way too long to get there.
But there's only two companies in the running, right?
They're the ones I negotiated with and talked to.
Okay, these are the best two out of a bunch, is that what you're saying? Or is they the only two?
Those are the only two that have expressed interest and bid it in the past.
If we were to redo it again, would you do it differently? Was it too complicated from Tetra Tech originally, you said? How would we, how do we go about it differently next time to get more people interested?
For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. I'm, you and I have talked about DemandStar and I really don't know what we could do differently specifically for the bid package. I think one of the things that we find ourselves in at Gateway is a lot of the stuff that we're doing is specialized, is very specialized, and there aren't a lot of vendors that do this specialized type of work. There literally are not with specifically this cleaning type of work, you have to have specialized equipment. We did reach out to everyone. We knew, we begged them to bid, but they just, you know, sign of the times, work is, you know, is readily available now. But moving forward in general, something that we met with a vendor last week on that does Lake Bank restoration, that's actually working on the aeration project for Pelican Preserve, and we asked why, because they said that, you know, they do certain type of work as well. And we asked, well, you know, we haven't seen you bid on work in Gateway before other than the aeration, so why haven't you? And we notified them of how we're advertising and, you know, the traditional way has been to advertise in the news press, the local, you know, local paper. And they said, well, we don't, we don't look at the news press, we look at DemandStar. They're a member of DemandStar and so moving forward, I think that could be one thing that we do if that's the mode that most contractors are doing now.
Well, DemandStar is an online portal for wherever people visits.
Right, and most, I say most, you know, a lot of government agencies are, have been progressed that way some several years ago, you know, five, 10, 15 years ago, what a lot of contractors and even engineering firms, it was subscribed to an organization that, a clipping service. And the clipping service was kind of the predecessor to like an online portal and that was a, this company would, because Ed, I'm sure is familiar with this, they would, they would basically have a territory and say it's the entire state of Florida. They would go to every publication that existed, whether it was the state Florida Administrative Weekly or a local newspaper, or whether it was online, and they would basically find every single project categorized and then send it to their subscribers. That's what contractors used to do, that's what engineering firms would do. And now we've kind of progressed to the online age and DemandStar is.
That seems to me the way forward then.
Yes.
That's how we would do it differently.
And I think that would, that would help. And what that does is it gets you out to a much bigger audience. So unless these contractors are still subscribing to clipping service, I know as an engineering firm, we're not anymore, so a lot of these contractors, if not all, most have probably gone away from that. Unless they just happen to be seeing it in the news press, then they're probably not. So I think it's just a matter of we reached the times where we need to be thinking technology is past us.
Yeah, we're still dinosaurs, we're still dinosaurs, aren't we?
We're still dinosaurs, so.
What does Lee County and City of Fort Myers do for that, for work like this? Have we thought of that?
As far as maintenance, I don't know if you?
I believe they have a lot of their own equipment.
Oh, they do it internally?
I know the city does.
They have a back truck?
They also have, I know the county and I think the city also, they do have, they do have a back truck.
How much do they cost?
The equipment itself, we actually had looked, Gateway had looked a couple of years ago at purchasing and I don't recall the number, I want to say a hundred plus, under 200,000.
Okay.
But they do have.
Which brings me to the last question, excuse me. Carry on.
No, 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 I was just saying, I think they also have vendors on a continuing contract that do certain things as well.
Thanks. Then, and that, I wanted to ask, how often is this done?
The problem is it has.
When was it last done and when will it next?
The problem is it has never been done, so.
It's every 25 years.
Is that because we don't do it in-house?
Well, it just, it's part of the lack of, just part of the lack of maintenance that we've seen. I think we've actually, you know, when all of this came up, how all of this started was we recommended that this, that the viewing that Morris Riley did be done so we see and we get a baseline for where we're at. And what I've said is I think you need to be on a maintenance schedule where you're hitting this every, you know, at least the worst areas, you're probably going to have to hit more frequently, but you hit it every, you know, every several years, so.
I'm going to ask the last question. If we bought a back truck for 100,000 bucks, I mean, you're recommending we spend 126 now, is that what you're saying?
It's, yes, but this also includes repairing a back truck, you couldn't work some of these pipes.
I realize. If we, if we did it in-house, is it worth evaluating whether it's worth going down that avenue in the future?
Um, maybe, I know that they're a high maintenance piece of equipment. I know firms that have four of them and only one is operable.
Okay, okay, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I know, it's, we had the same thought.
You ready to, you ready to make the motion to reject the bids and authorize the?
I'll make the motion to do as record, staff recommends.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Staff reports, district council.
Couple of items for my main, Mr. Chairman. The Pelican Reserve hearing before the City of Fort Myers on the amendment to the Pelican Reserve Development Order to correct some of the topographical errors. I have an email from the city staff indicating that they're, they're planning on having the public hearing on October 19th, 2015. And I'll just monitor it to make sure they don't slip anything in, which I don't think they will. So that, may I remark, anybody wants to mark their calendars. With Lee County, today sent a letter to John Fardema, the Lee County Assistant County Attorney on utilities issue. I just have copies to hand out to read at your leisure where it's my opinion with regards to following up the Burton report as to the city of the counties, Rob Ori report where the county had taken the position that the district owed additional capital funds and that they were being undercharged. So I concord with Mike Burton and also it provides some additional opinions as to, you know, the district's position that we don't owe them any more money other than what's in our rates for those kind of improvements. With regards, so that has been sent out. The, the last board meeting, there's some discussion with Mr. Senior and I and the board, talking about ways to have the community receive better communication. And we have the caveat that's in the, for statutes asked in the district website with regards to any time anybody gives any email addresses to the district, those are public records. And I've been engaging in some research since that time and in the next board meeting, I would like to anticipate having a memorandum to the board requesting authorization to work with Mr. Senior to draft a request for a formal attorney general's opinion on the matter and bring that back to the board at the next board meeting. Because the issue is, if my, if I provide my opinion and people start providing all their email addresses, we set up the mechanism where the third-party provider, you know, the people get individual Gateway email addresses, but somehow someone can get, at the end of the day, their private email addresses, then might be some other issues. So we have cover and protection for the district by attorney general's opinion if we won't issue it. They may say, no, you can't do it. They may say, yeah, you can do it. So I'll be, I'll prepare a memo and bring back a proposal to the next board meeting.
I really think I should just spend one minute conveying to my colleagues here what the proposal might be. There is clearly a resistance to embed residents' private email addresses within the district because they are a public record and there is concern and understandable concern on the part of the board that those should not be made public. I do believe though that there is a desire, from my standpoint, a desire that we need to be able to communicate directly with our residents in this digital age without having to go through this third-party property management companies across 58 HOAs, which seems very cumbersome to me. So the idea that I've discussed with Tony in the last two weeks is to, is to create a gatewaydistrict.org suffix where every resident could choose their own prefix. Gary Newbauer, gatewaydistrict.org, and you would, you'll be able to go to the Gateway District portal and it would transport you to a secure server, probably GoDaddy or Internet Solutions or those big outfits who will operate under password, where a resident would be migrated under password, they would choose their own prefix, you would choose your own, or it could be a funny name, whatever, applesnail. Dot district at gateway.
Got to get rid of them.
Get rid of applesnail.
So you choose your own prefix and that becomes your Gateway Communication email address and that's a public record. However, when you go, you're at a third-party host, you would then be able to enter your private email address where you'd like it forwarded to. And that is held, that is done totally away from Gateway District, it's done at a, at a Network Solutions host provider, meaning that we don't have any record of that private email address that you're having your email forwarded to, but we do have gatewaydistrict.org listing so we can communicate to our residents through this alias email address. That's what this is about.
Since, since having private servers is rather a hot topic today.
Come on.
Inmybasement.org.
It's not for you to down creativity, come on.
I'm not trying to down, but what I was trying to say though is.
That's a great domain name, by the way.
What's that?
Inmybasement.org. You may be spending time on something that we still run into that, can the person actually go to the cloud, if you will, and actually request of the cloud that information which is intermingled?
That's what Tony's saying. If we don't store it, don't file a private email address, so it can't be a public record.
That's, that's the question, whether it would be, whether.
And its only value is provided it will auto-forward.
I'm sorry?
The only value to this.
It will be auto-forwarded to your private email address.
Is if it can be auto-forwarded.
But that's done by a third-party secure host, not by us.
And the concept would be it would be auto-forwarded to your private email address and the private email address would not be construed to be a public record.
Understand.
To be accessible, that's, that's a question, whether or not it would be.
So you're going to bring this up in two weeks and we give us all a chance to think about it in the meantime, the pros and the cons.
On that same subject, I just would like to pass out, because I was asked to create what I thought could be a possible letter that went into the bills and this is the draft of that, my thoughts, my ideas and that, so I'll just pass those out to think about that.
Is it this thing that I've seen before where it gives kind of a warning to people, et cetera?
This one is a strong warning.
Well then, you might as well say that the people aren't going to sign on anyway. If they see something like that, they're not going to sign on.
Yeah, I think you're right, but we can take this and look at it in conjunction with.
Let's digest it.
It's a thought.
Thank you, Margaret, for that.
Thank you, Margaret. Anything else?
Go ahead and digest it.
Yes, briefly, I think a topic will come up where other staff reports with regards to, I get notified by South Florida Water Management District on a weekly basis of any permit applications or any applications that come into their Lee County area. And it's always helpful because at times there are applications that pop up that show up involving Gateway where the district has not been previously notified that somebody was applying for a permit modification to the districts, the overall water management district permit. One of those involved Timberwood and the district staff learned, we learned from South Florida notifications that there was a permit modification or a letter modification requested for Timberwood. And that was something that hadn't been brought to attention of the district engineer or district staff. And immediately, district staff jumped on it and notified the home montez, the engineers for WCI as, what are you guys doing? And the communications going back and forth. Based upon those communications back and forth, there might be issues, and I can be corrected by Danny or Scott, with some aspects of the water management, this surface water management system that's being constructed at Timberwood. We would ask authorization to send a letter to Lee County Building Department and Development Services saying, these are some of the issues that have surfaced recently involving Timberwood. Please make sure your building folks who issue COs work with your development folks that look at the overall site infrastructure to make sure that whether or not Lee County wants to continue issuing building permits and or COs until this water management system issue is resolved. But if you want to hear greater detail, you've got Danny or Scott, but I think that's just a sort of a red flag to Lee County to please make sure you're paying attention. Because sometimes Lee County or any other governmental body, left-hand, right-hand, may not have, may be a coordination issue.
So you, are you looking for authority to issue?
No, that's just, it's authorization to send out a letter to Lee County.
Any objection?
No.
Thank you very much. I wanted to make you aware that and also provide. RWA settlement, the check has not arrived yet. I've been bugging RWA's council and hopefully it should arrive next week. And that's all.
How about Daniel's preserve?
Oh, I didn't, I apologize. It's on my list, I hadn't retrieved all the information about that.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, one other, I'm sorry. It has nothing to do with Tinkerville or piano playing or falling waters or anything else. About a year ago, you all had the pleasure of reading one of my memos dealing with the change in Florida statutes as to what was required to be on a governmental entity's website. And here's another copy of the handout, but of the memorandum as well as the legislation. One of the aspects, the staff is working to make sure that by October 1st, 2015, that we have achieved what's required under the Florida statutes. There's no penalty indicated, but it's always nice to be in compliance of case anybody asks. One of the aspects, or a couple of the aspects that's required is to provide the name, address, email address, and if applicable, the term and appointing authority for each member of the governing body, which means the board members all supervised. So the name, address, and email address in your term of office would be on the district website. As I noted in my memorandum, the statute does not state whether the address is to be the home or office address of a board member. I would suggest you use the office address.
Rod, chill.
Okay, that's, the statute doesn't, isn't clear. But the other component of it is, is the email address. We have, I think in the past, established email addresses at, at the district to, makes it easier for maintenance of public records if anybody makes a public records request. We have them all, any emails that come in involving district business, we would be requested to have people send all those emails to that address so that you don't have to worry about gathering that up in the future. As it is right now, some people use their private email addresses where they have to make sure they maintain that separate, maintain those, or forward them to the district to maintain. And separate district email addresses have been established, I think Justin has those, and we would suggest that that's what we utilize, we put that on the district website.
But the auto-forward will be?
To your private.
But then again through, does this then overlap what you're doing with Rod?
No, it's a bit different. Well, we retrieve the public records request because it's already, anything that goes forward from, is forwarded to your private, is already stored in the district system, so you wouldn't have to maintain it. And the district website would not have your personal email address, would have your district email address. And that's what you, I assume it'd be a hyperlink, there'd be a photograph with an, with an email address, somebody could click on that to email Rod.
Right, we just need to state, right now it just has.
And it would go to the district email address, which then gets forwarded to your private or an alert.
Right now it just has a link, but it doesn't state the actual email address. And just to be in compliance with the law, I think we should state the actual email address so that they, if some, for some reason, link doesn't work for their computer or their settings in their computer.
So if we, if we make a motion at this moment, will you then tomorrow take every one of our emails, if some people, such as myself, guilty as charged, have it there or for a fine Gateway or whomever, that it is separated away and from tomorrow on, all of the emails will go to our district address with an auto-forward to our private email?
That's the thing that Scott is looking into right now, whether it can auto, whether they can auto-forward to your personal email or not.
We made the correction, but this computer won't let me do it and I had it up for a moment.
I stopped doing that. I collect all of them, going through the portal and reading them right.
But how about though, as a standardized thing, we just do that?
I recommend that.
And it's, so how about you let us know tomorrow after you've had a little more time?
It's on the monitor in front of you, we've already proacted.
Actually, it's not, I've got your thing about going to.
Four of us, four of us have our private email address and Margaret hasn't, gatewaydistrict.org. At least we did until now.
Yeah, now.
We did, we did last week when I last looked.
We changed it today.
Okay, well, that's what I'm suggesting for the entire residence. We all have gatewaydistrict.org as the suffix.
Is there a question though as to whether it will auto-forward, Scott, or not?
You would have to pay. You would have to pay for all of those addresses.
Well, let's just focus one thing at a time.
Yeah, let's not worry about, I'm worried about the law first.
Let's get with the principle of this.
But to work in compliance with what Tony described, typically if we go to what you see before you on the screens, where you have your photo and name and, and position number, et cetera. Let's see if it works here.
You got those from the post office.
So in other words, if you send us all an email, we'll know pretty quickly when we get home? Or when we check our cellphone?
Well, this computer's not letting me do it.
Standard protocol to be able to forward it.
Yeah.
You just go to your host provider and forward it, it's standard.
I prefer to keep it separate, separate.
We've already taken care of it and we're making it awkward.
It's, it's separate here. Perhaps we should review it again in two weeks, Tony.
Make sure it's up.
Let's put us some more thoughts together and put it in writings laws, and so, have it clear.
It's already contained, but we'll update it.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I agree, my address is this office.
Oh, the office address.
Yes.
It'll add the office address below here. But then what I'm trying to do is, when you click on the name, at, at least on my desk computer, you click on it and then it prompts up the email to that individual supervisor, automatic.
The, the benefit of, of where are we heading with all this? Is that we can do electronic billing, water billing, we can do electronic newsletters, emergency bulletins for hurricanes, survey monkeys, ad, we can do a lot of direct things with the residents on a proactive basis rather than hoping they'll come to our website, which very few people do.
They all are district addresses and they go, they're sent to you under that. They are not hyperlink to your private ones that are on the district website.
And that's the way I want them.
Automatic forward to their personal email.
Well, they were talking about doing that for the email broadcasting, but you want it also done for the district?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's another step.
All right. And I know that you're capable and competent.
But if you're gonna, if you're gonna respond to an email, you have to respond from your district email.
Yes.
You don't wanna respond from your personal email. So they forward an email to you, then when you go to create an email, you have to use the district email.
Oh, you expect me to respond to an email?
Well, I'm not saying. I'm sure you do it.
Mr. Chairman, would you give me, would you give me and Tony a couple of weeks to try and clarify this? I'll work with Diane and I'll try and.
I certainly will.
Talk again, talk again in two weeks.
By all means.
Well, except on the issue about the residents versus the board.
The residence issue.
Yes, sir. We'll work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, when I had asked about the billing, just, and I know you're gonna be working on this, I was told we are nowhere near ready to do electronic billing.
What we're doing, what's not electronic billing, what it is, it's a proactive, bi-monthly email to say, you, you can pay, your bill is now online, you go to the, it's taking them to the website to pay electronically. That's what this, that's what the purpose of that would be, not to, not an electronic bill.
Okay.
It's, it's notifying people that their bill is available on the web portal, prompting them to visit it.
Why aren't we ready at this time?
We aren't anywhere close to being ready.
And why is that?
Well, I suspect.
We haven't even got the system complete.
We haven't even finished the, the system on the new meters.
Right.
Yeah. And until the new meters are all in and running and the software and the computers are all talking to each other, it is just, what shall I say? I don't wanna say stupid, I can't think of any better word.
Well, we just came up.
Then you try and get into something as complicated as that until you have your base set.
How much extra money did Rod, Rod came up with 570 bucks earlier.
785.
I'm sorry, 785. We can hire a ten?
All right.
What's holding you back?
We're going on.
Yeah.
District engineer, get up here, please.
I have 20 items to discuss. That's all right.
Happy hour ends in 12 minutes.
You're gonna miss it, sorry. I have two, two items. One, sometime ago, this board asked if I could look at the possibility of putting reflective tape on some light bulbs.
Seems like it.
We did.
Long time ago.
And, and I've looked, Tony's looked, at MUTCD as well as FDOT. And although there's nothing specific about this type of case, MUTCD does support the use of reflective tape. So, you know, I don't see anything that prohibits us from doing that. I think it would create a safer situation until those polls come out.
Can we order the operations manager to go get some reflective tape and put them on the pole?
It sounds a good idea to me. Thank you, Kathleen.
Are you happy?
Do we have staff enough to do that?
I think we can, I think we can manage that.
Get about a couple teenagers and have them set graffiti.
You want to allocate some accountability?
I do.
You need, you wanna motion for it?
The, the only other item I had is just an update, the last board meeting. You had asked if we would move forward with a package for pre-qualifying contractors. And we do have a draft of that and statutes reviewing it. So I'm hopeful if, if board wants to see that, we can bring it back to you at the next, at the next meeting.
And you're gonna get on DemandStar and?
I personally can't do that. I mean, that's something that we, we've discussed at the staff level. And I don't know if that's something that would, I don't think that would need a motion, but that's something that would have to be done on Gateway's side. So you, because you would have to become a subscriber or a member, whatever that would take.
From what I've heard, it would be a wonderful idea.
Absolutely, I recommend it.
Any objections? Please go ahead.
That's all I have.
I have one question for you. And that was, we, we approved the stormwater cleaning for the, what's gonna be done for the road rehab. Where are we with going forward to actually find a vendor to do all the other work that we need done?
Well, we have, I don't know if you wanna address that, but I'd say we, we have options. I mean, we can negotiate or we can pull that package back out. We can wait till the DemandStar's ready and we can put the package back out for the remaining areas, which I think was, was primarily Stony Brook and Silverlegs, so.
If I may, for the record, it all depends on the cost of the project. We may not be able to negotiate with one vendor. If it's over $300,000, then we, then we have a competitive selection process or bidding process. I think it's over 335 or now by the time they factor into the numbers.
And, and combined, it is.
Yes.
Separated out as Stony Brook and Silverlegs.
Yeah, provided it's not separated out to evade the competitive selection.
No, 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 I mean, they are, they are truly, they are truly different. But I, I think you're, you know, your most cost-effective is, you know, go the DemandStar route.
You can phase it.
Okay.
Thank you, Danny. District manager, we're gonna talk to you and we're gonna talk about Aquagenics contract update, is that correct?
Yes, but first, if I may, I'd just like to bring you up to date on a couple of follow-up items, if I could, real quick. Last meeting, we talked about the, question was raised about our vending machines and the, the monies that we do get from that. We did, in January this year, we entered into an agreement with a new vending operator. And we did receive, for the first six months, our fair share of that, $150. And it is going towards Holiday Event or into the account and Stephen's tracking it. The other thing we, question was raised about the annuals put in front of the Stony Brook Monument sign. I have spoken with Mainscape. They, because the wall's so high, the grading, et cetera, et cetera, they're gonna increase the size of some plantings up there to make it a little more visible. They're all the same size, but it was deeper, so that's being taken care of. The other thing, had a meeting, well, let me back up. We were scheduled to start milling and paving Griffin Drive from Gateway Boulevard back to the FPL easement, but due to weather conditions, it's pushed off. Now they're looking at coming in here Saturday and doing that work. Saturday and probably the following Monday, Tuesday, so they're, they're trying to get it done. It'll be, and it's a traffic, one lane with flagmen working the hours of, I think it's from nine to three to avoid school congestion. We did have a meeting this past Tuesday with WCI, a coordination meeting, and their prime contractor for the road rehab, which is Ajax, along with their engineering staff. And we had our folks there and, and our engineering consultant. And they are, notice to proceed for them is next Monday, September 21st. They're beginning with their mobilization and maintenance of traffic. They're gonna be doing some tree removal and things. They're updating their schedule to coincide with some activities that our contractor has as well as adjustments for the schools' activities. They, we all went over the school calendars and the charter school calendars. They are going to begin with the minor roads, if I will. When they get into the actual roadwork, they have, they're gonna go from mobilization, maintenance, traffic, the tree removal. They have some drainage to install in the medians, so you'll see some concrete boxes going out there along Gateway Boulevard. And they're gonna be doing some open cuts across there to reestablish the drainage from the medians, where those swales are, to take them to the swell, from the median swell to the right-of-way swell, out in the shoulders, to make that a positive drainage. And we also had three members from Lee County staff at our meeting this past Tuesday as well, who will be overseeing the work on the county's side. But the minor roads would be the Eagle Point, Girl Scout, Devonshire, and, and then West Links and in the Commerce Lakes east area and over in Commonwealth. They did bring up the idea of doing some night work to avoid the commercial and the school traffic. And I didn't think we had any heartburn as long as it wasn't near residents. And then they could, it wouldn't affect the businesses or the school operation. So when we get closer to that point, we'll fine-tune that. We're gonna be holding bi-weekly meetings here in, in this office at 8:30 in the morning. I think they're on Wednesdays, I believe. But they're gonna be working through, it's a six-month contract. They hope to be substantially complete within five months or thereabouts. So depending on weather and they are all set to go. Ajax is a very reputable contractor and they're also using PMI as one of their subcontractors doing the milling. So they are all in tune and coordinating their efforts. We continue to have our three message boards at our primary entrances that we're sharing that cost with WCI. At Daniel's and Gateway Boulevard, Gateway Boulevard 82 and Griffin in 82. Just the head, you know, the warning, maybe we need to change up the verbiage because after 30 days, people don't even read it. So we'll try.
Can you put some of that on the website, or what you're just, if?
It's, it's all on the website, we update that every Friday afternoon. And we'll continue to do that.
Pam?
I think I'm gonna do something about the water pooling on Griffin Drive by the exit of Hampton.
Absolutely, the engineer, Barocco and Associates is addressing that. They had a, they are modifying their permit with the county. They are going to put basins there and drain it from that, that ponding, that's horrendous. Yes, yes. I do have another update for you. Yesterday, our new maintenance specialist, utility apprentice started. And Kenneth Hall is his name. He comes to us with over six years' experience with the city of Cape Coral. And working the water reclamation facilities. He's one of their operators and does maintenance and repairs on the plant. He's managed the various work sites out on the, in the community, repairs and utility systems for, for roadways and things. He holds a, let's see if I can, current wastewater treatments certificate from DEP. We're gonna get him licensed for water distribution. He's experienced in doing our testing and sampling. He has an OSHA certificate. And I checked with the references over at the city of Cape Coral and they all spoke very highly of him. He left town two years ago with some family issues, moved to Maryland and has come back to the area. And my simple question to his previous employers, would, would you hire him again? And they were in the affirmative. So he started yesterday with us. So we're getting him all acclimated and, and in tune. So that's a, happy to have him on board. And then also Anthony's on board with their recreation and maintenance and moving forward with that. We had a meeting earlier today and, you know, it takes a little time to get these guys in gear, but he's hands-on, he's sweating, he's digging, he's painting. So real pleased with his progress. Just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you.
Questions, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
What salary did you agree on with this Kenneth guy?
$18 an hour.
Okay, and second question, did we get together with WCI to try and get the price of our signs down?
We, I did talk to the vendor and he was very apprehensive of doing that because it was a public bid and there could be some ramifications on addressing that issue after we accepted the bid. He did email me today that he is aware of a new FDOT requirement that is costing him, some of the poles have to be taller for clearance sake. He is, didn't know that when he bid it. It's now something new that he's gonna comply with at no extra charge. And so that's very positive and.
Thank you. Last question, when do you think that the district and WCI will have completed all their work so we can hand it over to the attorneys to transfer their roads to the county?
That was a lot of discussion at our meeting with WCI on Tuesday as well. We're probably, I could say, they, their work will be completed in six months. Ours will be less than that. We have a lot of that as-built information, easements for description. Rick Verlansky was here with home montez. And so my guess is within, as soon as everybody can get done, 60, 90 days and then get it to the county.
Are we talking about middle of '16 for conveyance? Something like that, is that longer than you think?
Well, if they're done in February, March, probably, yeah, the summer of '16.
Mid-year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
This time next year.
Yep. More later. I just wanna give you that update, thank you.
We have an item on the agenda under District Manager for Aquagenics contract update. And that was in our agenda and are you, are you gonna help us with that? Rod gonna help you with that?
I, I can help. It might be better to wait, if Cal is, has been the main guy behind this, perhaps it's worth tabling this for two, two weeks' time.
That's perfectly all right with me.
I'm agreeing.
We, we, just so you know, we are scheduling a meeting for next week with Aquagenics and ourselves to dive into some of these issues.
Thank you.
So.
It does seem, there's one thing I wanna say though, Scott. If we're gonna table this, that's great. But reading this, I'm confused because it says in the first paragraph on page 100 of the agenda, it says that if Aquagenics statements are correct, then they are complying within the stated provisions of the contract. That's halfway down the first paragraph. Okay, I'll read it again. It says, if Aquagenics statements are correct, they are complying with the stated provisions of the contract. But then if you turn over to page 101, it then goes on to say that the, a notice of non-compliance is hereby given. So it means that we don't think they're complying with the contract. And that's confusing to me. So that's something I'd like to raise in two weeks, as to whether they are or whether they aren't in compliance.
All right. Thank you. Okay? We'll raise that.
And if I may, if I may interject, I think what might be helpful for the board also is, and they had this discussion analysis, is to have a copy of the letter that went out to Aquagenics so they can see what they've been notified of.
Good.
Okay, supervisor comments, Gary? Rod, do you have anything else?
I do, but I'm gonna strip it down to just one or two things on the list. I'm not gonna take a lot of time up here. Stephen, may I speak with you for a minute about security deposits, $650,000 current liability item? We raised this, I raised it a couple of weeks ago and I, I don't know if any work's being done on this with this, with you or with the staff, but I think I, at least from my, from my perspective, I'd like to know whether we should, we can do a fairly simple, if it is such, such a thing as a simple audit, to, to look at that $650,000 number and say, how much of that could we, if the board decided to, could we return to residents who have been paying in? could we return to residents who have been paying in time, paying on time for the last twenty-four months, for example, which would be in line with, with the way Lee County does it, the way FPL does it? If we were to make that decision as a board and say, could we return monies to those people who are good payers? How much of that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be paid back? That would be one item in the audit.
Okay.
The second item would be to analyze what's left.
Say, say again.
To do an audit of what is left. Let's say four hundred thousand dollars has been returned, for example. Then we've gotta figure out, what is that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's left? Does that comprise of people who are not paying on time, or does it, or does it include residents who have left the district and have never been reimbursed? I think we need to know that. It's, what it is, it's a thorny subject, and it's been shoved, it's been shoved under the carpet for, for years. And I think we should, we should deal with it head-on.
Okay. Yeah, we, we've started looking at it and asking questions. The, the initial feedback we got, and we'll do the analysis, was about ninety-nine percent of refunds are returned, meaning that staff takes, you know, first of all, they get forwarding addresses, as well as they take extra steps to make sure they return that money. So you're not, you're not gonna probably get a huge amount that is sitting in there that's related to residents that have moved away and were not refunded. And one of the reasons why is that the refund amount itself is usually taken care of in the last bill, so that there isn't a whole lot extra. So just, that's just kind of some of the initial stuff, but we'll do the official analysis.
So when do you think that we may be able to revisit, revisit this thing?
I'd have to see the details first.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a couple of comments about this subject, if I may. First of all, I wanna pass out to the board the rule, the official rule that has, that we have adopted on these deposits, so that we're all working from the same page. And I apologize that it wasn't sent to you earlier. It was my intention that it be sent to you earlier, but I think it's absolutely important that, that we know that we have adopted a rule, and if we're gonna change it, we have to advertise the possibility of a rule change in here and hold a public hearing. Now, having said all that, irrespective of whether refunding these deposits is a good idea or not, that this time, I think, is a terrible time. I think until we get all of the meters installed and have the computer system that is doing the billing running very smoothly to try and put this burden on our staff, which would, I think, require a subjective judgment on some six thousand accounts, at this time, it would be a terrible burden, and I would be hard-pressed to support it, at least at this time.
If it's going to be a burden, I share your position, but I'm not sure at this point that it would be a burden.
I have to see how well the current system provides that data. It's really a matter, 'cause again, you certainly don't wanna have to go through, you know, sixty, six thousand accounts
Right.
trying to check their payment history.
But there's never, never seems to be a good time to deal with this. It's just been sitting there for years and years as a, as a fixed security deposit in our current liabilities. And to me, it's just not right to hold on to money for that long from good-paying residents. And there never is a good time, Bill. But if this is gonna be a huge burden, then I, then I, I would be concerned as well as, as the chairman, but I'd like to find out just if it is a big burden.
We'll ask some more questions and see what's available.
Thank you.
Good.
Well, I'd have to assume that money moves in and out of that account.
Sure.
I mean, new, new people come on, or they've bought houses, and the old resident gets their portion of the deposit back, or all of it back, if they've paid their bill. So I think that's an account that doesn't stay just static.
It's not an account. It's six thousand accounts.
Right, I, I know. I think of the line item. And, and it's not unprecedented, Rod. Water utilities all over the country do it this way.
Yeah, Lee County doesn't. Lee County refunds it after one year.
Let's, let's go on.
Thank you. Thank you for your input.
You have items for us?
Yeah, one thing. Scott, is Ivan here?
No, he, no.
What's this thing about the stolen meters that we're reading about in the Gateway Sun?
Do I have some?
Yeah, I mean, is there, if there's nothing to it, then don't waste our time or your time, but is, is there some stuff going on here that we need to know about?
It is my understanding that with the placement of the new meters, they pull off the old lid, and in the middle of the cast iron lid, there's a, a little flap lid, and the guys come and pull that off the, pull it off the box.
Yeah.
And in several cases, it has broken off.
Okay.
So now you have this little four-inch by five-inch reader lid.
Yeah.
Sublid, if you will, and it fell off. And so you, they put it back together without that on there. We have addressed that with our contractor. He is assured of this. All of them are being replaced at no cost to the district.
Okay, thank you. How much, how much is at stake here? Are we talking?
Nobody stole anything, to the best of my knowledge.
Oh, okay, so it's not a question of stealing?
It's, it's a, I, I don't know a number. We've asked our contractor to go back and do additional quality control on it.
How do we stop it happening again?
Training of the individual that are doing the installs.
That's seven trend?
It's, Fordaline is our contractor.
Yeah, but there's seven, seven trend to subbing.
There is a subcontractor.
So those are the guys that we have to train?
And there could be a sub-subcontractor. I don't know.
Okay.
There's various people involved.
So you're on to that.
We have it addressed and under control.
That's, thank you, Scott. That's, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one thing. We were talking about the, the stormwater, the problems with the grass and the fertilizer and all of the issues with how people, residents should be talked to or trained on how important it is not to do those things. That's the kind of a letter that I think could go in the billing too, just the do's and don'ts about the stormwater system, including for people that don't necessarily live on a lake, 'cause they kinda think, oh, well, I'm not affecting what's going into the lake.
They don't realize.
Right. I can pour my grass clippings on top of the grain in the street, and it's not gonna cause a problem.
It'll just wash away.
Yeah.
Good point.
That's it?
That's it. Sam?
Ladies and gentlemen, I believe that we are ready for adjournment. No objection. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your good work this afternoon.
So, there's never been an assertion manual for seven trends that I'm aware of, at least not in my training, of what I'm supposed to do as a project manager or anything like that. But I have adopted a protocol that, say, we engage XYZ company to do a project and it's gonna be fifty thousand dollars. So then I send lead accounting.
So Tony, would you like to get that over in a little bit?
Uh, yeah.
And I'd expect, if I also send the W9, it's gonna be a few hours. So theoretically, I've made a plan to count it, that this project costs us a soft twenty thousand.
You know, a couple of times.
I've thought about it more and more. It won't be that hard for the agents.
So you haven't found anything that's kind of like precedent on this? We're pushing the envelope with this stuff. It's difficult. There's not gonna be a lot of cases where...
No, the, in fact, it's something, I'm surprised no one was asked a question.
Well, I mean, I'm doing this stuff all day. I'm on the online game, so I'm, I'm kind of a...
And I would like you to help me, explain to me with the online hosting, if there's any other sources out there.
I will.
Where I can then say, to, to not rest upon, or need to support your forums.
Before we meet, I'll check with Diane and find out the web host provider, and I'm gonna talk to them, and I'll find out just how we can forward emails to it. We're toast. Do it under security.